...the trustees of the town Tallahassee. Second item on the agenda, discussion and action on intergovernmental agreement of purchase orders.
I'm trying to figure out, probably help me out here on this one. It says here we've uh... We've bought forty dollar fifty, or twenty-seven dollar works, and we've got a deal spin. What's that?
Buy jacket.
And splash bomb.
Full battery toys at Target?
Yes.
Battery toys.
And I said we bought a bunch of noodles.
Yes.
And that's what I see back there in that box.
Yes, and these are back there in that box.
Sixty-three dollars.
Yes.
And you personally paid fifty-one cents here and forty-two cents there.
Yeah.
Where did all that money come from?
We had ninety dollars on the bill.
And donations?
Donations.
Okay, well, the deal I got here, my boss. That was good because it sold twenty-seven dollars. So...
Forty-seven dollars because you required me to turn in the money that was donated to me for just next.
And that's not where I was staying.
We're part of a little amount of money.
And it doesn't matter if it stays.
So this was not forty dollars and fifty cents, this was twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents.
Okay, so this paid, this paid for the party.
And I donated the forty-two cents.
And then somebody else gave you sixty-two dollars and forty-nine cents?
No.
Yeah, we had sixty-three, and then I had twenty-seven, so there was...
Who were the people that donated? Did you document it, give it to us later?
Yes, we did.
And later, did you?
I did it as a city.
And you did it as a city.
And there is a receipt up here in the city.
Yeah, uh, the audit was like, it has to compare with the city, and I say that's right or still.
I do believe, I do believe there is a point there that when it's such a little amount of money that it was, we're clear.
I don't think you're right, but if you want to make the audit, you get scared of this, we can do that, but it's protecting your board and your city.
And yourself. For myself, my friends, I'm worried about it.
But that's not the point, if it's possible.
I make a call. Is this the only invoice that we're approving?
Mm-hmm.
I make a call. Is this a bit of cash?
I guess. I hope that's what you're saying. I'm losing stuff, you know, I'm running.
On April 8th, I'm going to... I say much. Any more discussion? The...
Amy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Sears?
They're staying.
Grace?
Yes.
Item number three, if we reject inter-reading the executive session under Oklahoma State Statute Title Twenty-Five, Section Three-O-Seven-D-One, discuss the appointment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disbanding or resignation of the individual salary public officer employee Rick Rose.
Make motion, Jennifer.
I have a motion.
Sir.
In a second, any more discussion? You vote.
Amy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Item number four, if we reject it, sitting from the executive session.
Make a motion, Jennifer.
Do you have a motion in second, any more? Session. The...
Amy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Item number five, action of meaning from executive session. I make a motion to terminate Wick as animal control officer only, and he may be in his position as reserve officer.
Can I second?
Can I?
Can we edit and put away a card in there?
Yes.
Have they?
Immediately.
Do you read that back without...
Mary Olson, makes a motion to terminate Rick Rose from the animal control position, but to keep him as the reserve, reserve officer. I think immediately.
And we're going to start.
Go ahead. We have a motion. Do you need a second?
I think, really, you. Did you bring that last sheet?
I think you. Any more discussion? The...
Amy?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Mary Olson?
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion and action on intergovernmental agreement of... Discussion and action on the proposed measure for two thousand fifteen, state disapproval.
I figured this was fair to my own, I'll hand you that, and you're often looking at it as a parent. I maybe have to look a bit different one.
I'm going to stop this.
I think we're talking too bad.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Um, let me look at, uh, what our revenues are. Going on our April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, financial report showed us of April thirtieth, twenty fifteen, we collected six hundred and thirty thousand in revenues. And if you multiply that by ten and add two more months to it, we'll have another hundred and twenty-six thousand, that's just speculation. For a total revenue collection for this year of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand. If you take ninety percent of that, that's six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we can technically budget. And I went ahead and put in the audits to show you how much our audits are going to cost over this year. And what I did was the total cost of the audits are going to be eighty-seven thousand and one hundred dollars. Does anybody out there want a copy of what I came up with? There's one here.
I'm going to make a copy.
Um...
Because I don't have a copy.
And you can see what the audits are, and since half of it's town Tallahassee, half of it's public works, I subtracted half of it from the projected ninety percent, which according to the numbers that we've been given, will have six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to budget for the town Tallahassee on what we use this year. Now, we go on a budget for this current year, and we had a budget of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, so we've got a hundred thousand dollars less to spend in our budget to cover all the services we have here. Y'all understand my concerns and where I'm coming from on that?
Yeah. I'll just say, I mean, it's probably going to be a lot longer than thirty-five thousand.
Oh, thanks.
It's just, we've got to pay for two auditors just come down here and pay their salary and all expenses for how long they're here.
But, but, but in petition, I tell you if I'm wrong, they tell you that the...
They tell you when the costs are not going to exceed, they're not going to exceed thirty-five, that's the top end. The range is twenty thousand to thirty-five thousand. If they do more, they stay longer than they projected, it doesn't change the top end price, it still caps off at thirty-five thousand.
Well, that's why I put the thirty-five down there, because that was covered.
Well, the county was...
Well, that's, that's what they're doing in the petition and, you know...
That they're the ones that okay the petition and come through.
That's right. And they're, they're pretty specific in, within the petition format of letting you know that it caps off at thirty-five thousand. There's no reason whatsoever to believe I can't take any responsibility for what somebody else told you, but thirty-five thousand is it.
When they tell you that, I tell me everything.
When you say they, who are you talking to? He told you what?
It can be as high as a hundred and forty thousand.
No, I...
And it could be...
I just want him to tell me now, I don't know.
And it could be, not knowing what was passed worth of the petition.
Talk to him.
And then...
When did you know?
And at the time that the first petition started.
So, so that was...
Is that prior to the actual one?
Is that, I remember when it was starting.
Is that because it covers so many years that we've not had an audit? I mean, it covers...
This is a different audit.
It's an investigative audit, is that what you're referring to?
The, the financial audits is the audits that we haven't got together since two thousand...
Right, but the reason that you're, that we had a petition around to begin with is because you haven't had an audit at all in years. Well, that's one of them, that's one of the reasons.
One reason.
But, uh, just to alleviate any concern about it, I mean, the petition is very clear in, uh, in any related correspondence or discussions since then, since, see, you're talking about the time that there was initial talk, there was a petition that was circulated, it was found to be null and void because it wasn't in the proper format, because Mr. Trey Davis had been out because of an illness in the family, his father subsequently passed away. So after we got it back and they prepared it the way that they, they saw it, that's when it, when it was finalized and capped off at thirty-five. So it's very possible that prior to that time, he said it could have been as much as six, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, I don't know what your discussion was. But since then, I'd be pretty certain it's caps out at thirty-five thousand.
So you see my concern, we've got basically a hundred thousand dollars left to do the same thing we did this year with. I'm seeing all the layovers and sitting down and really getting serious of trying to figure out how to save money. And actually, my figures are more than Mary's. Now, one good thing, which I don't, I don't know if it'll happen or not, but if we get all our audits done this year, we should be able to collect twenty thousand dollars or so in, in other vehicles and excise tax, uh, if we can get these done.
We need to, we need to live back two years, so I need to help me after that.
And then, and then averaging, and I'm trying to extract it because the last time we got it was two thousand eleven, so I don't know what the codes are in those last few years. Uh, but I'm figuring between eight and ten thousand a year, so sixteen and twenty thousand dollars, we should be able to get back in case that we aren't getting, that we would be able to get, you know, close to ten thousand dollars every year to put on our streets and outlets if we're not getting for asphalt.
Mary, can I ask a question? Sure, I'll be right here on KDA. Yes, okay, on sales tax revenue, we are collecting twenty-three, one hundred and thirty thousand. You're anticipating for two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Is that simply a ninety percent that you went with, or...
Yes, rounded down, and actually what I have that Bonnie doesn't have the benefit of yet is the main figures. And so when I was forecasting these general fund revenues, certain items that are once monthly transactions, like these franchise taxes and beverage taxes, most of those I already had in May, so I was able to calculate May. And then, yes, it's exactly what you said, maybe rounding down a few bucks. And then the other thing that I had in terms of methodology that was a little bit different than Bonnie's, because I wanted to get on the side of being conservative, was I consider, when I looked at some of these items, I didn't use the traditional divide by ten times by twelve method to annualize because I knew that that was a once per year transaction, for example, or something like that. And so in that case, rather than, you know, overcompensate for something I need to do when I receive, I went ahead and took the hit and did the ninety percent.
I was curious, because on sales taxes you went down ninety percent, but on alcohol beverage taxes it actually up.
That's based on historical, though.
So historically it's going up on...
No, it, no, but we, when you annualize, and again, I have the benefit of the main figure, but when you annualize based on the eleven months of data that I have, and then you took out the ninety percent, it did actually go up. And what I did, because last year when I did the budget, I brought this file, it was like this. Okay, this year I did it, well, not, not close to, but I did it all electronically. So every single line item has a work paper, if you will, that has all the calculations on it.
Okay, we're doing this about a month earlier than what we usually do, but you think these numbers are going to say...
Well, here's the thing, first of all, we need to get started earlier than we usually do.
Yes.
In order to comply with all of the budget requirements we've stated. So that's a good thing. And in this case, Rhonda, again, on most of these figures, I did have May, so what was lacking is June. And if, you know, okay, so you look at last year, let's, let's switch the conversation. If we have the discussion of the part this year, you know, sales tax, yeah, there's some variance there, but there's a range. And then we have that one outlandish number that, you know, you can annualize in this store. So maybe if we had those kind of numbers that we were looking at, I'd be like, well, Rhonda, I'm not so sure. But in this case, where our historical data stayed within, within a range without any exceptions to what we would normally see, I feel like that, that clearly statistically, that annualizing it is, I feel very careful is what I said. And again, erring on the side of being very, very conservative on both the general fund and the public works revenues.
Yeah, it's, it's true to see that the sales tax is going to go down, but...
Well, again, we're looking at ninety percent, we knew it would take someone to get, and you know, it's just, we'll see how it does. I, I mean, in my opinion, we can get into a big philosophical discussion, but, you know, the things that you guys could do on a city level to promote sales within the city, usually it takes a longer period of time to see those revenues in the paper here, you know.
Can you give me the balance on our general revenue account and the T W P?
I mean, I, as of what?
Twenty-eight, it'll be not the current statement, just recently.
Okay, you said May.
If you've got last month's, I mean...
Of course, I just, I keep the records all the time.
Do you have a, did I just want in, that's just come out?
It won't come out until the first of June.
Okay.
They are on monthly statements. But, um, so I don't have a regular salary.
What was the one from last month?
Okay, absolutely, you want me to bring this in?
Yeah, give us those figures now, give us a little bit as far as if there's carryover.
Oh, no, there's not, no carryover.
So see, guys, we've got to sit down and get serious, because we get part of this money from public works, and public works is the same thing. And they're both tied together. We're looking at getting a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of public works this year, public works will be down to even more than this. So we got problems. We're going to sit down and start looking at everything.
And if it's ninety percent, it looks...
Well, the figures that I kind of know with, we see how it compares to Mary's. Let me give you my copy of what I came up with from public works.
We really need to go, we have public works.
But you need to know that to do, they're interchangeable. I mean, we're taking a hundred and seventy thousand out of public works, the finance of Tallahassee, we have to, we have to know we're going to have the money to take a hundred and seventy thousand. So when you look at this, on public works, on public works, we budgeted one point two million, and according to my record, we're going to have one million. So we're talking about two hundred thousand down in public works. And like I said, these aren't figures that I've just pulled out, happy for figures that we built on our financial statements.
Okay, would y'all like to, are we going to use public works?
No, we're good, we're good listening.
I'm just asking if we want to go to bank balances. Okay, one of the things that Renee and Bonnie had requested was that we wanted to start seeing some historical bank balances. And it's important to know that in a typical monthly financial statement, for a special D nine five, I possibly will, please, that you guys have a balance sheet ever made, but I would explain to you that I can't provide one for her on the audit. However, they, you know, because the balance sheet would include those bank numbers. Since we often have those now, they have requested some historical data. And I have what is a really ugly, simple worksheet. I was planning on being able to start taking care of those with you guys next month and make them look a lot nicer at that point. But for now, we just have raw data, and so I'm going to first hand you the ones for the town, since Bonnie is asking for balances. And then, second, and again, our contacts, these aren't labeled, like I have a manual presentation ready, but the secondary sheet, starting with C R G, with the public works. I don't have draw cards somehow. Do you want these? Because I, did you put your, can you take markers apart now with the natural markers?
So basically, in our general fund, as of, it's projected to have thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred dollars in the bank. No, that's in June last year.
Yes.
We had ten thousand four hundred and ninety, the general account is in April the thirtieth. And on April the thirtieth, in public works, we had two thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. Now, y'all heard we talked about the carryover that we're spending to pay everything now? We should technically have seventy-three thousand at the end of fiscal year in the town, and we should have a hundred and twenty thousand in the bank, in public works, at the end of fiscal year, carryover.
The carryover, if we hadn't spent our period of expenses, that's correct.
So we spent our carryover to pay expenses, and we don't have anything to carry over, so now we're biting that bullet now, in this fiscal year coming up. So we have to sit down, we have to look at pay rates, we have to look at bonuses, we have to look at water machines, we have to look at coffee, we have to look at everything. The Berliner could cut two, at least two hundred thousand dollars down altogether. Well, we've got to sit down, and, and, uh, we can sit down, we need to go, in my opinion, department by department, we need to sit down, the police department, say, what do you see that you can cut? You know, let's say, for instance, right now, our budget for the town is seventy, and I did figure out when you got this figure, Mary, it kind of put me off a little bit.
What figure's that?
On the budget, you had seven, seven hundred and thirteen thousand here, but on our budget it was seven hundred and thirty-seven.
Okay, because if you'll notice, this is general fund revenues, that's all of the towns, this is only the general fund. We have revenues and we have funds.
Okay, so, and as I say, my total figure is actually more than yours.
Right, right, I did take a very conservative step.
Yes, I'm glad you did. Because it's better to err on that end than the other.
Right.
Now, I know you guys have been cussing me for the last six months, saying, guys, we've got to cut. And I know some of you said, oh, we're doing correct. You know, we're not, we've got to be serious, and we've got to talk to the fire, we've got to talk to maintenance, we've got to talk to water. Because we've got certain things that are going to come in here and not look, Mary, took in consideration odds of our, our, our comp's going to build up on us.
It will, but it's not going to hit this year, and yeah, it's going to go up a lot.
It's going to roll a lot.
It's not going to hit this time.
So we need to prepare for that.
That will follow.
Our chemical costs of the plant are probably going to go up.
I think it's going to go down.
You think it'll go down?
It'll go down.
Okay, now, and, and, and here again, I've never advocated this, and people think I have, I've never advocated putting this out, but we have to look at, can we afford bonuses, can we afford bonuses, can we afford pay raises? We may have to say no to cut two hundred thousand dollars, but we have to sit down with each department, I'm not throwing anything up, if we have to do it, I'm saying these are suggestions that we have to start looking at.
And let me just add, you know, because I didn't have the benefit of time to look at it as a whole, you know, in my mind, I don't consider these things piecemeal, I don't consider, you know, you guys make the decision salary over this, over this, you know, I would like the opportunity to do some additional analysis on the historical expenses, of course, it'll be classified by department, and, you know, and then taking the same conservative approach with, with the revenues. So we have an entire set of very detailed numbers versus now we have a very, very small piece of the picture.
And another thing to conservative, too, is the fact that we're only sale taxing our company, and other businesses are normal. So, if we...
Bonnie, I would like to, I know we've had this discussion last year, this year, all around, but I just, I would like for you and I to either come to some sort of a rule on one thing, or refer it to somebody who is more knowledgeable than we are. And my interpretation of the state statute is that the public works revenue fund is not limited to ninety percent, is the general fund limited to ninety percent, so traditionally, as an enterprise fund, that's what I'm going to project conservatively, but budget one hundred percent. Obviously, I want to do what's in compliance with the statute, so we know this doesn't have to resolve at our this time.
No, we don't have to resolve anything.
Okay, well, I'm just asking you about methodology, Bonnie, so, and if, if you want to show me what that is, or refer to me as someone, and tell me, you know, how this needs to be done. My interpretation is general, but, um... Do you want to...
We need to have some meetings.
Okay, do you have a calendar? Do you want to set a date for each department, or how do you want to do that?
I think that'd be the proper thing to do.
That'd be your plan. We have, um... So, for example, you guys, I have a Brian, and we can see this is an awesome job that is right inside, actually gave him an electronic file that represents all his historical transactions for an entire year, and he's, he's gave that to him so he can use that in all of his budgets. Certainly, that's available department by department.
Okay, Bonnie, so what time of day do you want to meet on this?
No, that's not made, that's collectively.
I know, no, it doesn't. You can make it. Chris, on my money, because I'm sure it's all going out here, my here's the state statute that counts at number two, that covers liabilities for y'all and all that, so, thank you.
I'd be happy to show you guys the fraction I have as well, like I said, we may not figure it out here tonight, if y'all want somebody who is law-need to tell you that, that's my money.
When do we want it?
Do you want to wait till Mary has the department?
Well...
Or do you want...
We're not cutting that one.
Well, I know, but do you, I'd like to know where from on each department?
Well, what I would suggest is we need to get every department thinking about what they want to cut, and start looking at that. We may not have two of them, but at least know and get the ball rolling. There's no sense waiting two weeks, and whatever, a week, or whatever, and having another meeting and others. Just to clearly start it, and start making, and have suggestion of where they think they can cut.
Okay.
And, uh...
Tuesday is good for meeting, while I was kind of wondering if we can meet with each department like an hour, thirty minutes, and...
That'd be more than thirty minutes.
That way you're the better...
Fresh or light, if we need to do all on the same day, to me.
So are these odd, are these special meetings if y'all are all that?
Just do a departmental meeting, Bonnie, just so we don't need to...
But, but, but more than two, so there's got to be special meetings.
Well, I know, but...
Do your own department, they've got information, however, you...
And then if, if one of, if somebody else was assisting you, that's, that's fine.
We would have to call it.
That's a special meeting, I, I think it'd be all of us.
Okay.
Let's do special, special.
Just do a special meeting, and sit down and...
Talk to each department?
Talk to each department, yeah.
And the grace?
Talk to their department.
Well, that's what we discussed, that's what Bonnie would do.
We can tell them to have a...
They would arm them and start...
They get together as a council, and bring it to you by each department.
And Mary, um, and another thing that I found out, if you separate out on the payroll, what the actual payroll is, what longevity is, what the cost of living is, and separate those out so they can actually see those, and, and I found out by law that we have to start doing payroll in our consent agenda, because it's illegal appropriation, we don't, we can't just pay payroll. just pay payroll, we have to approve it every month.
So our regular key on to meeting is June the eighth.
Want to make next Tuesday? No, not next Tuesday, next Tuesday's the ninth, no, next Tuesday's the second.
Either one, I, I'm a veteran.
And that gives us a little bit of a heads up on whatever regulatory.
Okay, so next, Tuesday the second, special meeting with each department to be here to discuss, uh, specific budget.
So what we need to do is, we need to make a motion. And then, so, we need a motion to say we'll have a special meeting on the third to discuss budget with each department, and inform each department to, uh, be able to present their budget with proposed cuts to their budget.
Are you making that motion?
Yes. I'm making a motion that we have a special meeting on June the fifth?
Third.
The third, June the third, to discuss, uh, budget proposals, uh, and inform each department to be present with a proposed budget and options to cut. They need to be thinking about where they would like to see the cuts, instead of saying what they want and killing them.
So we each need to move, uh, to speak with our departments and have that...
We have to let them know they have that.
And have that ready.
Yes.
At what time?
Five-thirty, regular time, I don't know, how are you doing?
Well, I thought we were doing it here today.
Well, that's why I...
Well, I thought, I guess you might have been, when you did this.
It's going to take, it's going to take a little while when you go through maintenance and water, well, and...
We don't need to be here that late, we can do it here today, and then maybe take a break for lunch, and then, you know, do two maybe before lunch and two after lunch.
Can you do that?
I mean, I, I know, I know, she didn't get away here, whether or not, but...
I can, I can, I can...
You can't get away here, you know?
Yeah, I, I...
Okay. But we're misunderstanding if, I mean...
Well, we can do two meetings, I mean...
We can do two meetings, you know, it'd be better than having everybody sitting here.
There's no sense in that.
It doesn't have to be all of us, yes.
Thank you for that.
We could do two meetings. Three hours, please.
We better start bringing food, we're done.
If I start bringing food, y'all will want to leave.
So we have that one on the third, and she has to have it posted?
She doesn't have to actually post it until fifteen days before, publish fifteen days before the fiscal year, and have to be in the paper five days before that.
I just have to post this, if you're going to have it on the third, I have to post it by Monday, but I need to know what the second meeting is going to be, because I have to post that early too.
We'll do it next time.
If I can post it on Monday and Tuesday, that means there's going to be two separate meetings posted on that door.
It's all we're discussing, but...
On the third and fourth, example, we're...
Okay, so we need to decide which department...
Which department's going to lead the chase.
So do you want to do town on Monday, public works on the other?
Uh, no, not on the town.
Fire department, police department, um, everything you can pay up with, you know, police department, street and alley.
You want to do town one day, public works next?
We want to do that. There's a lot more of the town, uh...
Public works will be next.
We can do all the street departments, all the public works, but we can do this department.
Public works, third, then in the town.
Okay, so you're going to have to rescind your motion, and you're going to have to do it, because the way I have it, it's for both, and I'm actually going to put this aside, because I don't get some of that, maybe you can make a motion.
I just want to do my best. All right, I make a motion that we have a special meeting on June the third, at five-thirty, to discuss budget and possible budget cuts for the town of Townley. We want to do one motion for both of them, or two separate meetings?
Two separate, two separate. Motion in a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Fairly, yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
I make the motion that we have a special meeting, June the fourth, at five-thirty, to discuss, uh, budget proposals for Townley and Public Works.
And we are under the city right now, so shouldn't that be put, done when we are under public works?
We can, we can, within that...
So let's hear about it, number six, okay. Out of number seven, discussion and action on intergovernmental agreement with...
Federal county? My number seven is...
No, not on that.
I got that on my log, I did.
Out of number seven, discussion and action on intergovernmental agreement with Lattler County.
I've got that on there, uh, with the...
I need a motion. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, I've got it on there because of, with the recent flooding and damage that we caused by the flooding, it washed out the low water bridge between the old lake and the new lake, that had some plain access to their property with, and it's actually city property. Uh, I've looked at it, tried to figure out what we need to do to be able to make sure that stays open, and I talked to John Meadows with, uh, Lattler County, and he's agreed to put in a temporary bridge at the cost of the city, he's got money's hadn't for the last seven, eight years, so it should fit there, he might have measured it, said he can put that up until things settle down, and we can take a bill and see what needs to be done. So we just need to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Lattler County District, is that number two, Cal? Is John's number two, he's number three?
Has everybody booked this one?
I think he's got the top of it.
First one, that's the original, that's the original, yes.
And that way he can put that up, and Cal can access his property, and, and, uh, there's also property stipulation, partner wildlife, and we have to maintain a certain amount of public access to the lake, so it's a bit of a big estimate, but we're laying everybody all up until the weather stretches up, and we can actually look at assess the damage on that.
So basically, what it says is they are, um...
We have to give them permission to do something on our property, basically, but they need willing to do it. Yes, I make a motion that we approve their government agreement with Lattler County District, number three, I believe, Cal, and, uh, to install a temporary bridge, a whole order across it, behind...
Isn't that two separate issues, though? But we are entering into the contract, but then the contract doesn't specify the bridge work. Did I miss it? Uh, no, I think it's just what I was, in movement, you enter in, you exchange lanes.
This is a gem, this is a general and local agreement, this, this would also, uh, and we talked about this before, on trying to settle the dispute with the property owner adjacent to Mr. McLean, he's meant that this would also give them the permission to maintain that road, uh, rated once or twice a year, at no cost to us, and try to take care of the other issue if we...
Well, I'm saying is I don't think the motion needs to...
No, don't expect that.
I don't think it needs to be done, I guess he...
It just gives you, you know, legal authority to work on that problem. Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you saw that, uh, I've kind of reconsidered, and so I rescind the beginning of that motion, and just say, I make a motion to agree to the intergovernmental agreement with Lattler County. And since it's all pre-determined, we're going to make a statement which is...
Days to go.
That, just that.
Second, you have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Hello? Bailey? Yes? Walker?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Out of number eight, new business, any new business for the town? Get approval to have to be under government for the town. I didn't talk to one of the council, have it put on any time, but except for the, used to, Lattler used to be our government for the town, for the public works, but we don't have anybody currently on staff here to notarize things, and sometimes we need stuff done that possess that jumping, and going to the bank, or going to...
I think, I agree we need to do that, let's just quit, put on that, especially quick five-minute deal, the third.
Okay.
Just leave it at that, on any time for the third, let's do that very quickly, that way it's official.
Okay.
You know, they can't take action, this is something, so you, is that interesting?
Um, this has been interesting, and we don't, just need to really discuss it. We've had a couple of our lifeguards that we hired, did not go through to get their degrees, so one... One for sure is not there, so we thought we could operate on the five that we have. And then is we're doing schedules, of course, three, we'll all need to go off to New, to Mexico, family trip all at the same time. So we're going to try very hard, and I said, what we could do is just, what about the number swimmers twenty-five that day, when we have one lifeguard?
One way harder than, than John's question.
Of course, and I asked him specifically, is there any dates that you wouldn't be able to work, are you going to be able to make yourself a, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I want to see any, play while he's young.
So many of you might know that for next year.
We ask them every year.
We ask them every year, and they always say, oh, yeah, we can work all of it. Now, their work, you didn't tell us that they had football training camp, so we already do that, we have one employee that ended up getting a pretty much full-time job in the bigger owner, is still wanting to work part-time, but of course, he isn't going to be able to cover those dollars. So we may have to go back through and find somebody else that'll lend, but my solution right now is on those two days, June third or fourth, but fourth, yeah, we can't remember now, it's the only way I can remember the number sort of, we just have one lifeguard.
Okay, any more businesses? Out of number nine, more interesting comments?
I'm working, I spoke with, uh, the four county, uh, the problems on Beckton Street.
Yes.
They're going to take care of it, okay? So our maintenance guys will have to mess with it, what I did was talk to them and said, help us out here a little bit, guys will fix it and, and maintain it for a while, we'll probably figure out, in six months or so, they're going to figure a way to mess with it. They're going to come in, they're going to dig it out, they're going to put new, uh, material in it, pack it, and get it working up that street.
That's it, it's one half, it's county and the other half.
And, and so, I worked with them, and they're going to, they're willing to come in and do that, I just wanted to let y'all know. And also, uh, since we didn't have a public forum on this, if anybody in the public got anything they would like to...
I'd like to tell you, I talked to Brian, and he told me he's going to go through and fix that roads, thank you for talking to me, that was very nice of you.
You did.
Glad you were worried about it, and held that night close to, you know? I've told you weeks now, so, you know?
But that, that, and, and, and these are things that we have to learn to do because of our budget problem, we have to learn to work with other entities and, and stretch this dollar a little bit more, and, and we're going to get there. And another thing too, I didn't bring it up, um, I should have you a letter the next day or two, so we can go ahead and issue our letter, uh, to the American Airlines Commission, because the top combination did agree to match our money on grant, uh, to upgrade the airports, and I should have their letter in hand any day, as soon as I do, we've already discussed this in previous council, I approved it, I came upon receiving that letter, so when we receive that letter, I'll have Mary go ahead and type up our commitment to go along with the grant, just send on the OAC, and it will be a team cost decision.
We have a, a need with the street department, with all the flooding, we've been going through sandbags, crazy, trying to keep everybody's water there, we had customers come over one day and, and built two hundred, I think it was, sandbags, a bunch, and, and today we've had our city crew, still trying to fill them in, I put out on Facebook, we're volunteers, I don't know if anybody came or not, but any groups, really, it would be very beneficial of bring a shovel, we'll provide you the shovel, just to build sandbags out there, um, to try to keep them our property owners...
It's out back?
It's right out backside here, and I was doing it when I came in to check, so that's a, a big need and a service that we're trying to offer through the city, um, to keep some of our property owners, who do they protect? They can just show up out there at the barn, any of the guys could, could get going on that, show them how to do it, get them feel of that.
No, hell, but the ditches actually drain too.
The ditches are flowing because that's, we've had so much water.
That's why they do it every year?
They are pretty well, we watch it today, they're just filling up.
They're, they're poor.
The situation is bad for town, yes, and that's...
Very terrible.
So, yeah, there's the drainage, uh, when you ask people to come out...
It's pretty obvious.
Come out, they'll only, they'll only come out to whoever called them, like, if one of my neighbors called them, they'll, they'll come out and just clear that patch, and, uh, we need really to look at, over the long term, to have an consistent clean out of, of the ditches, citywide.
We need to be systematic, it's not...
Y'all be ready this summer to start having strategic planning meetings and, and start working on this.
Right.
And I think that's something to talk to...
Great, and, uh, well, if we're on two, we go on.
Man finish?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Then, we have a group on the June tenth that I talked about, that's coming out, that I've asked the volunteers, and I haven't had anybody come in, I need some project ideas, that's what I asked for the last special meeting, project ideas, what can we do with these kids? They're coming, they're willing, we've got to have tools, we've got to have people to go by and do that. If it's a safe area, if we put them in a ditch, it just needs to be dug out a little bit, that's a possibility, that we can do that, but I would definitely like to have Talia to be in here, working beside, because every year this group comes in and helps us.
What is it, KDA workers?
It's not KDA workers, it's KDA kids, um, we will have them, it's very nice, very nice, I need project ideas of, uh, to that, people help coordinate them, I think it'll be on the general, okay? Okay, so we discuss that, and we're supposed to place, we have ideas, we have...
Tyler, Melissa, that's part of things that they've already volunteered to, do they have that assigned to them already?
Uh, they're waiting on me to tell them what needs to be done, so they can be by them, and crew to decide.
No.
And besides picking up fresh, and picking up branches and things, you know, I give them specific projects, these kids have painted, we can have them paint, if they call, if we got a donation to paint, they can do that, we've sent them out to build personal property before, it's a way that we can get away from that, as a city, as a gray area, they can go out and they help individuals, and I provided personal lawn owners, leaders, and things for that, so if people have that kind of equipment, we can send them out to somebody that you know that's having hard time, you know, lawn mower, they can do that, but they cannot bring this equipment with them, because they're so full of their buses, just like it.
And about the storm damage, we need to have Keith and, and some employees document...
I think, uh, Mary said, Mary or...
To document any damage that Keith sustained, document it, because there is a possibility that if anyone declares this a disaster, it's an opportunity.
Right.
Maybe.
So we foresee...
It, it, that we may be able to get some help from FEMA, I don't know if our audits will come into play there, but it usually does, uh, but we need to document just in case.
We, uh, I've spoken with Mary about that, and she got with Keith and...
Okay, Mary did, I think she did, that's what we've been talking about.
Well, she essentially, my implications, I have extensive disaster management and large emergency, you know, big questions.
I understand you have, I know you have the qual, have you come out here and talked to us then?
No.
No, you come out here and talk to us, or don't talk at all?
Okay.
And, and what I'm saying here, we've talked about this on the audits, Mary's job is to get us ready for the audits, none of this other stuff, she has to say no.
Okay, so...
So she's going to say no, then you do it.
Have, have I come and asked her for anything other than the budget stuff?
Uh...
No.
Okay, okay, let's go, can you go ahead, um, any more comments?
I, I have one, I have one, we, we have some, who, who is first?
I, I, I just wanted to, to actually, when I, I Facebooked you on that, on the message, and I was waiting for an email for some more information, you told... for some more information, you told me that, that you would send me an email.
I sent it at night and I didn't...
You didn't send me an email, so we were still waiting on your response and we just thought you maybe were just too busy.
I've been just...
About two months, yeah.
June 10th, it'll be at 1 o'clock till about 3, 3:30.
Okay.
About all the information that I have. I don't know, what else was it you wanted?
Well, we were just wanting to know the details so that when Camille was gonna put it on Facebook and other places for, on, on social media and so you might be able, it was contact information for you because we're not like, you know, gonna oversee it. You are, so it was gonna be for people contacting you.
They have ideas or groups who wanna do it, contact me and I'll put them with it. Um, is it right now? We usually meet either in the downtown parks or at Harper Park.
Right.
Depends where our weakest project is, is where we'll meet.
Well, I, I, we just wanted you to email us the information so we could put that out there.
Yeah, that's basically it.
Yes, um, is there any, which way would be best contacting, through email, Facebook or anything like that?
We have a, we need to get a list of our emails for the public to know.
Facebook is the best way for me, but I only do it during business hours when I have time to get on the computer. I don't, if you Facebook me at night, if you Facebook me directly on my page, I can respond, but I don't use Messenger on my, on my phone, so I can't contact you on, on the private messenger after hours.
All right, Gina has all our email addresses and she's going to get that in, uh, ready tomorrow. I'll have a friend tomorrow, somebody wants to stop by my office and get everybody's email address.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I was just gonna say, when we get ready to identify and maybe this is something we do and we complete with everybody on our priorities and kind of outlining our unmet needs and stuff, the corner, the, the turn there on Church and Jackson is just dangerous and sneaky, you know, and fair, you know, it's just... If, all of us that live around there...
Without a six-foot drop in it, isn't it?
Yes, it's horrible. Somebody's gonna come through, Jack Axel in there is one of these signs, I'm pretty sure. Most of us that live around here know to take that wide turn.
Just have a wear and tear.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying it's a public hazard, actually. It's a cheap public hazard status.
Jackson, it's probably got a six-foot drop down the corner.
Oh, and it's either way, it actually is getting worse.
We don't know what's happening underneath there. It's probably eroding even more so that somebody could pull a little pin there, say, and still drop in.
Okay.
I got a question.
Do you have my next question?
Uh, I heard a rumor that the city council leaders were reading webcast or podcast. Is that true?
Not by the...
Not broadcast.
Go ahead and tell.
It's not being...
Not by...
We've been posting.
Before I put it in the paper, I wanna make sure it's true, it's what I'm saying.
It's true.
We've been, um, posting audio.
Because if you're gonna tell public this available, you...
And they have been, the, uh...
Big girl right here is the one that's actually doing it on the internet.
Okay.
Right behind you.
You're doing it on the internet? Oh, okay.
I'm posting audio.
Okay, so it is being done. It is available and it is...
Yes, sir.
Give it the address. Write it down.
I'll write it down.
Write it down for...
Do you want to use your...
Give it the internet address so you can go and see what are there.
Okay.
Okay. Any more schedule? Out of number 10. I've got it. We have a march. And a second, any of the schedule?
Yes.
Hammer? Yes. Sears?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.